All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 10th meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. Just a couple items before we get officially started. We are broadcasting this live on Channel 27 and the Pacific Coast TV's website. We do have several community members in attendance. And we welcome anyone that wishes to speak during the specific items. So Chair Benjamin will acknowledge the time for public comment for those specific items. And at that time, those wanting to speak, I will recognize them by them raising their hands. I'll acknowledge it as a first come, first served. And if you're on telephone only, you can push star six to raise and unraise your hand or and star nine for muting and unmuting yourself. Otherwise, there's features on your tablet, computer, iPhone, et cetera. There's three minutes given to each commenter. This afternoon, staff emailed the planning commission with a memo regarding one of the items, and it is posted at the end of tonight's agenda under the correspondence section of the agenda. I did want to make note this evening that the minutes that I incidentally, I just omitted the attendance sheet on the minutes. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, and we'll add that to the final set of minutes for the record. Just thank you for your patience with this remote meeting, and I will hand off the meeting to officially start with Chair Benjamin.
Thank you, Bridget, and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 10, 2020, meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, which I now call the Order. Could you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bridget, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Pogar.
Here.
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Vice Chair Ruddock.
I am here.
And Chair Benjamin.
I am here. You all look wonderful. It's great to have you with us. The next item on our agenda is the consideration of approving the minutes of October 27, 2020. Do any members of the commission have any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move we approve those minutes.
Is there second? Thank you, Commissioners Ruddock and Pogar. And these are the minutes that will have the addition of the attendees, yes?
Correct.
All right, very good. So I guess we get to have another roll call.
Commissioner Pogar.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I.
Vice Chair Ruddock.
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin.
Yes, and may I just say, Commissioner Hernandez, you look the very best. You sound the very best. So the next item on our agenda is the public comment section of our meeting. This is the time when anyone who is here from the public, who would like to address the planning commission on an item which is not on our agenda, should feel to bring that to us. So I'm going to open that section of the meeting. The public comment section is open. Bridget, do we have anyone who wants to talk to us about something which is not on tonight's agenda?
I have no one.
Going? Going? Meeting, the public comment section of the meeting is now closed, and we'll move on with our public hearing items. The first of which is the resumption of our conversation about geotechnical boring. And I assume that this boring topic will be brought to us by Brittany.
Yes, thank you, Chair Benjamin. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Right.
While we're doing that, I just want to say that this topic isn't boring at all.
No, it's not. So we were here just a short two weeks ago discussing this project, but just to give a quick refresher, this is a geotechnical boring exploration proposed by the County of San Mateo in the closed landfill area just south of the Poplar Beach parking lot on the bluffs. There are five geotechnical boring locations proposed, three on the bluff top and two on the bluff toe. As the county explained at the last meeting, the intent of the project is really to understand the stability of the soils, the subsurface conditions, and help identify bluff erosion rates and potential solutions for potential emergency repair needs should, if and when, the landfill material becomes exposed on the bluff face. And then for the long-term solution, the county is exploring the feasibility of a clean closure of the landfill. So as we discussed at the last meeting, the three bluff top borings will be accessed from the Poplar Beach parking lot. Staging and storage will occur there, and the path of travel will be south along the coastal trail to the HMB B1, B2, and B3 boring locations. And then the bluff toe boring locations will be accessed from the state beach up by Kelly Avenue at Francis Beach, and then access down the access ramp there and south along the beach to reach HMB B4 and B5. So to provide a little additional information in response to the city's inquiries and the Green foothills comment letter, the county has confirmed that they will be reviewing the tide charts and weather forecasts to ensure that the path of travel will be accessible at low tide and to ensure that the equipment and the boring locations are well upland of the water. The boring locations themselves are shown above the meanhead tideline, as you can see by the blue line here, and the county expects that the path of travel will also remain above the meanhead tideline. And so then to further address potential water quality concerns, the county has proposed a suite of best management practices to sufficiently protect coastal water quality, including erosion control measures, spill control measures, waste management measures, and dust control measures. All right, and so for the last meeting, the county had provided some additional environmental and biological materials to support their sequoia exemption and help with the CDP review for this project, including an environmental checklist and a biological constraints analysis. And the primary need for the continuance of the last meeting was to allow the county additional time to complete the bio memo to reflect their site-specific study that they did at the end of October. So we now have that memo that was provided to you in your pocket for this item tonight. The county has also provided an additional response letter that includes some additional narrative responding to the Green foothills questions and the additional questions that came up during the planning commission meeting last two Tuesdays ago. And the county has also provided us with the full environmental constraints and permitting report, which the biological constraints analysis was part of. And this full report gives a good picture of the potential public process that the county will have to go through for the clean closure feasibility study and implementation. And it also gives a good sense of how the city might be involved in that permitting process as the landfill is within the city's jurisdiction. So the memo provides a summary of the site survey that was done. It identifies the range of wildlife and plant species that have the potential to occur in the area and whether they were observed or they are likely to be present, not likely, or were certainly absent. So based on the observations, there were a few special status species identified, including several avian species, but none that are known to nest locally, specifically in this project area of the borings or that have a very low chance of nesting in this area. We do want to point out that the environmental checklist did identify that the Western snowy clover nesting critical habitat area does occur near the Half Moon Bay State Beach accessway north by Kelly, but just incorrectly stated the distance between the most recent nesting sighting and the access path. It is a little bit closer than the report did identify, but in other case, the biological technical memo did still recognize that there is a low potential for this species to nest here, and the project will occur outside of that nesting season. So again, another reasoning for a low occurrence of this species and their nests. So otherwise, the biological memo also identified areas of coastal scrub along the bluff face, including yellow bush sloping, and that's the area shown in green here. And it also identified some seasonal wetland areas, and those are the blue and purple shown on the map here. So overall, the biological memo concluded that each of the boring locations can be either are located and can be accessed without any impacts to these areas, with the exception of HMB B3, which is the southernmost bluff top boring site here, which they did recommend moving about 10 to 20 feet away from the seasonal wetland area located here. So the memo concludes with that recommendation to revise the proposed location of HMB B3, which the county has confirmed that they are okay with. As they mentioned at the last meeting, these locations were intended to be approximate and adjustable based on site-specific resources. So they will be adhering to that recommendation from the bio memo. And the bio memo also confirms that it agrees with the proposed avoidance measures of the environmental study or the environmental checklist, sorry. And so those include a pre-construction survey to occur prior to commencement of the project to identify any biological resources that are present again and having a biological monitor present on site during construction. The project is also anticipated to occur prior to March, which is the beginning of the nesting season for the Western snowy clover, as I mentioned, and the beginning of the pinnipede pupping season. So by beginning the project prior to that time, the likelihood of those species being within the project area are low. So we have proposed conditions of approval reinforcing these proposed avoidance measures, including construction timing, reinforcing the proposed pre-construction biological survey, and giving the city another opportunity to weigh in on any anticipated avoidance measures that are identified based on the presence of any biological resources identified, ensuring that the biological monitoring occurs throughout project construction and that that biological monitor is in real time, making sure that any necessary avoidance measures are taking place. And those might include flagging of any sensitive species, adjustment of the access pass or boring locations to avoid any sensitive species or resources, or just delaying or even canceling the project if resources cannot be avoided. And finally, we have a condition of approval confirming that this coastal development permit does not offer as any incidental take of any species that are protected under the Marine Mammal Protection Act or the Federal or State Endangered Species Act. And finally, I want to just highlight the Seymour geotechnical study. This came up at our last meeting as well. So this is a site plan from that report that was done for the geotechnical studies in 2017. So the four borings were taken along the north bank of the Seymour drainage. And this study has been provided to the county, and we hope that it proves helpful in their intent with this project and their future feasibility studies for clean closure. But the takeaway from this study was that there were no landfill materials observed in the borings and that there were highly erosive soils located underneath the upper clay layer. And before I conclude, I will just note that we have a few folks from the county here tonight available to answer any questions. And we do have John Doughty, our Public Works Director, and Denise Hutton, our acting city engineer. They are available for questions as well.
Okay, thank you very much. So before we go into the public hearing, do you colleagues have any clarifying questions that you would like to ask of staff? Seeing none?
I have one, Chair Benjamin.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see that. Yes, Vice Chair Ruddock, please.
Well, I was, I was slow to unmute myself. I think this probably be a question for the, for the folks from the county who are here, but there was indication, it mentions in the, in the proposal that the boring locations would be set back from the edge of the cliff in accordance with standard safety setbacks. And I'm just curious if they could be a little more precise about what those distances might be?
Yeah, so we have several folks from the county. I see Joseph Miller is raising his hand on that. I believe he is with the county. If you could bring him over, Bridget. Sorry about that. He should be over here right now. There you are, Joseph.
Okay, sorry, I was on mute. My apologies. Good evening. Thank you. I'm Joseph Miller. I'm with SCS Engineers. Our firm has been retained by the county to help assess risk management strategies for the closed Half Moon Bay landfill. To get directly to your question, the geotechnical investigation will be done under the watchful eye of the registered geotechnical engineer. We'll prepare a health and safety plan for the work, like they do for all, we do for all projects. That will take into account appropriate setbacks from the top of the bluff and appropriate setbacks for workers to be doing their activities in and around the drill rig. So yes, that will be part of the whole plan. A site-specific health and safety plan will be developed with an appropriate setback, approximately 20, 25 feet. It'll be adjusted in the field where the borings actually go based on that, as well as field conditions mentioned earlier by Brittany, or any sensitive species. Our goal is also to get outside the edge of the former fill materials and be able to do the investigation into native materials on the bluff.
Yeah, thank you. That's very helpful.
So just as a follow-up to Vice Chair Ruddock's question, Joseph, is the, is it, so you don't need to be in the coastal strainer on the wetlands? You can pick a site where the surface materials are not issues in order to get the information you need. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
Yeah. And there will be a biologist on site under the contract to the county to help in guiding those decisions.
I see. Did that answer the question, Vice Chair?
Yes, I know. Yes, thank you very much. It does. I know we were curious two weeks ago about whether we were talking about inches or feet or yards from the edge, so that's very helpful.
Right, and just to put a really blunt point on that question, Joseph, the plan for the boring isn't just for the safety of the workers, right? Where at that distance or at an adjusted distance, one of the goals of the safety plan is to avoid creating any instability in the bluff face. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Any other question, colleagues?
Yeah, I have, yeah, the chair. I also have a question maybe for Mr. Miller. I wanted to, based on the kind of constraints with the tides and other things like that and the timing, obviously, this is happening before March, and so it'll be in potentially in times when there's storms and such. Is it your anticipation that you'll be able to find a window of time? I'm assuming you need, you know, like a week or four days, I think it was four days, or maybe, maybe I'm misremembering the time for how long this will be. Are you anticipating any problems with finding a window that will provide you a good, safe opportunity to do the full project?
No, I don't see a problem with that. There will be two borings on the beach. I believe that will be conducted over a two-day period. The work is being done on our team by a subcontractor, anchor QEA. They're geotechnical engineers and maritime engineers, and I'm very confident in their abilities to work with tides and waves and things like that. Believe me, nobody wants to get stuck in the mud, as you will, with the drill rig. So all that's going to be done.
Any other questions, Commissioner Pogar? Brian? Rick, I don't see you.
I'm good.
All right, in that case, I'd like to open the, oh, before I do, I should just mention as a matter of public record, I have included in the record for the, for this project a copy of the location of Western snowy clover nests between 2001 and 2009. That was an excerpt from the biological opinion that was prepared to support the replacement of the Hernandez pedestrian bridge on the Palositos Creek Trail. And I also entered into the record an excerpt from the Marine Mammal Center's log of patients that, that is pinnipeds, that they have treated, which included a number of pinnipeds from the project area elsewhere in Half Moon Bay. So with that, if there are no other questions, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Bridget, do we have any members of the public who want to speak to this item?
I don't see anyone raising their hands.
Is there any correspondence?
I haven't received anything.
Me neither.
All right, so with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Who would like to comment on the project?
I just think it's good to see it moving forward. I'm happy to support it.
I concur.
Thank you. I assume that Commissioner Pogar's nodded head is in agreement with that.
I don't have anything additional from, because we discussed it in the last meeting, and I felt like we had a good discussion. A lot of the questions that we had have been addressed. So no, I'm supportive, and I'm pleased to see it move forward.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, go ahead, Jimmy.
No, no, please.
I was just, are you ready for a motion?
I would just.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ruddock has a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Ruddock.
I just wanted to thank Brittany and the folks at the county for being responsive to the, to the, our input two weeks ago. I think there are important improvements in the, in the latest draft of this proposal. I appreciate seeing the language in there that we're paying attention to not damaging the coastal trail and explicit attention to possible seals on the beach and the additional biosurvey. And thank you, Brittany, for mentioning the, while a little bit tangential, thank you for bringing attention to the Seymour borings. I want us all to keep in mind the high erosional potential of that north bank of the Seymour Channel, not necessarily with regard to this boring's testing project, but as part of the bigger picture. So thank you for, for those improvements to it. I think it's, it is great that we're ready to move forward with it.
Thank you, colleagues. I would just add, I think that there were some great improvements in the project since the last time we saw it. Also, there were just a few more key improvements, I think, in the draft that was presented this afternoon, for which I'm, I'm very grateful. I know sometimes that can be a real nudge, but I think this is one of those times where the project will benefit. Keeping it out of the pupping season and the nesting season solves a host of problems, and having monitors helps us manage the risk that we still may encounter some seals or sea lions that have hauled out. I noticed that in the Marine Mammal Center's list of animals that have hauled out in our area, it included some in February. So we're, we certainly have to continue managing the risks outside of that season. But since most of the haulouts, as I understand it, are young, who have been brought up, so mom can go fish, you know, it certainly sounds like a big step in the right direction. And conformance with the Coastal Act Policy 30230 gives us good protection for the marine mammals and a basis for enforcing the Marine Mammal Protection Act. The Policy 3-4, that's now cited as well in the findings, also provides us with a basis for requiring the protection of these species. So I really cannot thank you enough for that in pointing out the extent of the habitat of the clovers, which goes a bit further than the earlier analysis. But with these changes, I'm confident that, you know, with good monitoring, we will find our way through. So thank you very much for being so careful in pursuing it. Thank you to the applicant for understanding the concerns that are a little bit different in the coastal zone. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I'd move that we, move that we approve a resolution to approve PDP-20-043.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, moved by Commissioner Holt. Could I please have a roll call vote, Bridget?
Commissioner Pogar.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I.
Vice Chair Ruddock.
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin.
I mean, I, very good.
Motion approved.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Brittany. We appreciate your work on this. The next item on our agenda is an application for a CDP for a new two-story building at 7795 Main Street. And for that, we turn to Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission.
Good evening.
Let me go ahead and share my screen and get the PowerPoint going here. Okay, can everyone see the first slide?
Yes.
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 Hey, here's a aerial photograph of the site and surrounding area. The site is within the commercial downtown and is an infill site. A two-story commercial building currently exists along the southwestern corner of the site. The rest is vacant, in the most part. It's across the street from Kitty Fernandez Park and at the eastern terminus of Filbert Street. All right, here's a photograph of what the site looks like currently. And the project itself includes the construction of a new two-story mixed-use building. And the ground floor of the proposed building would include a small commercial space, roughly 480 square feet, and then covered parking as well as other ancillary and storage spaces. The second story would include three dwelling units comprising two, two-bedroom units and one, one-bedroom unit totaling 5,164 square feet. Now, the existing building on the site would be converted from commercial office to two one-bedroom units. Seven off-street parking spaces would be provided on the site, all covered, and one would be dedicated to disabled access. Curb gutter and sidewalk would be repaired and replaced as needed, including the driveway apron with new street trees, tree grates installed similar to what exists on Main Street. A new vehicle, electric vehicle charger would also be installed along the site frontage. And that would be access, accessible to the public. And then the permits requested include a coastal development permit, use permit for the residential units, and then architectural review. Here's the post-rendering building. And a little bit about the history, the planning commission saw this project on study session back in, on October 22nd of last year. Planning Commission provided some suggestions on the project. Project was modified and resubmitted. We then presented the, the project to the Architectural Advisory Committee on November 21st of last year. The AAC provided additional feedback on design. Project was revised and resubmitted, and we presented it to the Architectural Advisor again, once again, on August 20th of this year. Minor changes were then made to the project on the board. Vice plant were resubmitted, and that's what we presented, we're presenting this evening. Some of the key changes that have taken place to the project since the commission reviewed this during study session include conversion of the existing building to residential and minor changes to the entrance to the building as well as the increase in plate height of both stories of the new building, creating an overall height of 33 feet to inches, which is taller than the previous design. Addition of corner boards and the band around the building as well as other minor architectural changes. Some key items for the planning commission to consider, conformance with the general plan, local coastal land use plan, the downtown specific plan, and of course zoning. This slide shows the proposed site plan, and I tried to emphasize the new building outlined in blue and then the existing building in green. The site plan also calls out the location of the new electric charger as well as the bicycle parking in front of the, the existing building. This slide shows the, the first floor plan, which includes the new office space on the lower left-hand corner as well as the covered parking. And then the, the right-hand corner includes the new unit on the first floor of the existing building. Another thing to note on this, on the first floor plan, there is an elevator that would provide access to the second story residential units. And then here's the proposed second floor that includes the three units on the, within the new building and then the one, one-bedroom unit on the second story of the existing building. This slide shows the, the proposed west elevation. It includes the new, the existing building with upgraded entrance and windows. And the idea was to more closely tie in the existing building to the new building, but show some subtle differences. And I think the architect did a good job in doing that. And then just for comparison, this is the, just the proposed west elevation without the existing building. And one of the changes that the Architectural Advisory Committee suggested was adding the beam entrances along the, above the, the parking area there. And they've included that as well as some plantings to emphasize the, the new architectural elements. For the AAC's recommendation, the southern roof portion was changed from a gable to a hip to match that of the, the front roof element. So that change has been done as well. And then this is the, the east elevation facing Johnston Street. And the windows have been minimized to decrease any potential privacy impacts on the, the single-family homes behind the site. North elevation. This faces a, an existing commercial building. And then the landscape plan. Noticed that five new trees are included in the landscape plan. And my guess is that there will be some, some additional succulents added to the, the landscape plan once they get into developing the project. On the utility plan, this project will require some additional sewer line access. And we've been working closely with Public Works and Engineering when reviewing the proposed utility plan. We've gone through several revisions and meetings to make for certain that we're, we're all okay with the approach for the additional utilities that will be required for this project. And what's been presented this evening is the, the result of the meetings and the revisions that have taken place on the, the proposed utility plan. Rating and drainage shows a new driveway apron that would be built to city standards, the three new street trees, and then a detention basin, which I've tried to emphasize with the green rectangle. As far as off-street parking, this project is interesting in that our new parking code was adopted during review of this project, which reduced the amount of off-street parking that was needed and eliminated the need for a parking exception. So I think we're all pretty excited about that, that our new parking code is actually working. That said, they have requested the 20% reduction for mixed use as well as the guest parking waiver. We believe that the findings can be made for those requests, being that they are including a new electric vehicle charger as part of the project and more bicycle parking than normally would be required as well as an improved pedestrian experience along the street with the new street trees and the new building. In conclusion, the proposal is consistent with other mixed-use development within the vicinity. The product does conform to many of the policies within the downtown specific plan, including establishment of mixed-use developments and provides a pedestrian-friendly streetscape with parking in the back and no additional driveway curb cuts. This slide shows a rendering of both the existing building upgraded as well as the proposed building. In conclusion, staff is supportive of the project as revised following the Architectural Advisory Review. And we recommend the planning commission provide the applicant opportunity to speak. The architect is also logged in this evening and is available to answer any questions. And I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Before we invite the architect or the applicant's representative to speak, are there any questions that you colleagues have for Scott or you hope that the architect will address in his comments? Commissioner Reddick, Vice Chair Reddick, I'm sorry.
Scott, the, your landscaping slide went past, went by pretty quickly. I, I believe you said there are a total of five trees, of which three of them are street trees, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Seeing Jill's hand raising here.
Sorry, that was me trying to unmute and say Jill.
Thank you, Chair Benjamin. John Daddie and I were having a sidebar here, Public Works Director. He noted that in your packet materials for this item, the, there's a condition of approval and we will suss it out, but it's about sewer connection fees. And it's citing a previous version of our code. The code was recently updated when council approved and updated fee schedule. And so we'll provide some suggested language before you get to any motion tonight, should you move forward. But really, the intent is to have any condition of approval complied with the code on the books.
Thank you.
22 is what I'm referencing on that. I, I need, I'm, I believe it's the, I believe it's a reference to the prior ordinance and to be clear, we can put language to, just makes it clear.
No detail escapes his eye. Other questions? I had a couple. Scott, in the architect's drawing, it talked about solar being important and it made a reference to future solar on, I think it was sheet A03. And when I looked at A03, maybe I just, you know, am blind, it's probably there, but can you point to what they're talking about?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And what I'll do is I'll go ahead and pull up the plans here and then screen share and show you that.
Fantastic. And while that's coming up, I should also just ask about the conversation about landscaping. I understand the tree and there was a dialogue about the kind of irrigation that would be needed at the Architectural Advisory Committee, and I wondered how that all played out in the diagram.
Okay, so as far as irrigation, I don't believe that they've, they're including any irrigation at this point.
So there is no, so it's hand watering?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then about the solar panel?
Almost there. Screen share. Okay, so the, the proposed location of the solar panels is shown here in the hash marks. Anyone see that? Okay, it's the sheet A2.03.
It's because I was looking on the wrong sheet, thank you. Now I can see it, thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
I have one that maybe the architect could, I was a little confused in terms of the photos of the, kind of the renderings. It looked like the existing building is, is being, will be a new paint, will be painted a new color. And then there's the, and then the, the new building will be painted as well, but they're not the same. I just, just, that was the question. So when, maybe when the architect's presenting, just to, it was a, I couldn't tell from the rendering kind of what that was meant to be, that's all.
Yeah, certainly. And I'm, I'm sure that Andrew, the architect, can go into more detail. But the, the general idea is that to provide subtle distinction between the two buildings, but not to the point where they're contrasting. So that's, that's really when it's very helpful to get an architect involved to, you know, find that balance, so.
Any other questions? All right, so I'll just follow along with the irrigation conversation and say in the, hopefully in the presentation on architecture, as I recall from reading the Architecture Advisory Committee's conversation, there was some concern about some reluctance to put in an irrigation line because it would necessitated another meter. And that other alternatives that would not require another meter included drip irrigation or some other low-flower kinds of irrigation. And I'm interested in having a better understanding of whether those alternatives were considered and why they didn't seem like a good idea, since it's hard to make planting survive sometimes unless they're zero scape and beyond establishment, we just don't need irrigation. So with that, I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant and his representative to speak with us.
We, I'm gonna put Janice and Andrew on. I don't know who wants to speak first. Janice and Andrew are in, you seem to unmute yourselves.
Hello, I'm the designer for this project. I'm the applicant and kind of representative for the Janice and Robbie Moody, who are the property owners. And I will address the irrigation. There will most likely be a drip system. And that will be at where the new trees are and in the planter boxes. We just didn't show drawings of that, just because normally we show that in building department stage of the game.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, and I'll address the, the coloring scheme, so Commissioner Polgar, you are correct, they are two separate colors. So the new building will be one set of colors, which we have a dark blue and a lighter blue up top. And the new or the existing building will have a lighter color, lighter blue on the bottom and a darker blue up top. And we felt that we wanted to make these buildings kind of in the same color palette, but different colors so that they, you don't just see one large building there. And I think that was, I think I've addressed all the comments. I think Scott did a great job presenting. Thank you, Scott, for, for putting that presentation together.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moody, did you have anything you wanted to say to the commission tonight?
Well, yeah, I'm fine with drip irrigation. I'm also a master gardener and, you know, I've been hand watering everything here, including my nursery business and everything survived. As long as I'm alive, I'm sure it will survive with drip irrigation or without it, but I'm happy to put in drip irrigation, no problem. Yeah.
Through the chair?
Yes, Jill.
Staff apologizes. I'm, I'm looking at the Architectural Advisory Committee excerpted minutes, their meeting summary notes. And the information that you read about irrigation and that discussion was associated with a different project. It, I can see that this was a discussion about the Melon Charisma project, which was worked out on a separate track. And I think that we just included an extra page for you that you, you didn't need. There's kind of a gap there, so. I think you have heard from the applicant what their intent is and we And we, we are sorry that that led you astray and we're about to get it sussed out. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Moody, for the comments. All right, while we have the applicant here, does anybody have any other questions they wanted to put forward? Yes, Vice Chair Reddick.
Thanks. Yes, I, I'm always a proponent of, of street trees and trees in general. I think the, the more we can do with trees in downtown, the healthier and more attractive and aesthetically pleasing downtown is going to be. Coincidentally, Chair Benjamin and I this afternoon attended an online meeting of San Mateo County agencies that were discussing lessons learned from the extreme heat events of last summer. And this wasn't the number one thing, but one of the findings was that communities are in, much of the county are investing a lot more in proactively creating trees in their, in their, in their spaces for the cooling benefits that they are going to bring to residents, especially residents who don't have the economic opportunity to have installed air conditioners or to, or to move into a place with air conditioning. So all that is to say, with Ms. Moody being a master gardener, I imagine you'll be hopefully receptive to this. But it would be great to see, to see more trees in the project. I recognize that the residential units are upstairs and they don't have garden space for that. But I wonder if there's anything could be done to, to make it a little greener, perhaps even something as simple as increasing the number of street trees. That's, that's all I'll, that's all I'll add.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions, colleagues, before we invite other speakers to weigh in?
So for the trees that are proposed, what, how big do they, do those trees generally get?
You know, I, what do we end up with on the street? I know it changed a few times. Oh, May 10s, there may 10 trees in the, in the front. They're at least 25 feet wide and at least 25 or 30 feet tall. And I think we were going to substitute the lemon tree that we were going to put in the courtyard and make that a flowering plum tree instead. That would be a larger tree as well, about the same size. And there's an existing service berry tree on the corner, on the southeast corner that could remain or we could replace it. But it really, I don't think people would notice it. And the neighbor complains about it all the time going over and I'm cutting it back constantly. So I don't think we want to put a big tree there.
Yes, Commissioner Reddick.
Well, the, the size of the, of the trees that you mentioned, if they do indeed attain that fullness and that height, it'll be a much more attractive thing than what we get from on. So I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
And perhaps I can just follow up with a question. So for a tree that size, it was unclear to me what the size of the box was. I remember attending an urban arborist's conversation that was critical of many cities, very small exposure for the root system. They had sort of four by fours, they called them tree coffins that limit the size of the structures. Can you clarify, just because I'm not good enough at reading plans, how big the, the space for the root structures will be?
Talking to me?
You are your architect, Ms. Moody.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure what Andrew designated for the, for the space, but I know most of the spaces allotted for trees on Main Street are substandard for tree growth, really. There, and they've outgrown those, those spaces. And I think I walked down the street one time with one of your Public Works people and we commented on all of the openings and the trees and how they were pruned and everything. And I think the, the size that's in front of the IDS hall with the grates on top of it are actually a much better size. I think there's something like three by five or somewhere along there. But the bigger the better, because that's, that's going to help more water saturation, more establishment, more drought tolerance. So I'm all for that. Yeah.
We're in complete agreement. Thank you. All right, anybody else to speak to the applicant or the applicant's architect before we open the public hearing? Okay, in that case, I am now opening the public hearing. And wonder, Bridgette, if we have anyone who'd like to speak on the project?
I have no, I have no one.
Is there any correspondence?
I had nothing. I will double check.
Had a letter.
Yes, I did receive one email supporting the project.
I think there was one in the packet.
Correct.
I think it was for this project. Right.
We received nothing since, I believe, though I haven't, I don't have anything. So yeah, nothing current.
Right, okay, very good. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for, for your thoughts. Who would like to comment? I would just like, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hernandez, thank you.
I would just like to commend the applicant for going through the process in good faith and with the due diligence they've applied. Looking at the project now versus where the project was when it was first submitted, I have to say it's an astonishing improvement. And I feel like the Architectural Review Committee or Advisory Committee has really stepped up and worked with the applicant to make a significant improvement to the project. And I'm aware of the applicant's green thumb and I'm sure that she will make it even better than the original plan with the various plants. I'm sure she's going to add to the mix. But this is an example of something that makes me pleased to be on this planning commission, where I feel like we've helped move the project forward. And I hope that the rents the applicant can charge will compensate her for the time she went through this process. So thank you for this and I'm very pleased with the project and I'm very supportive of moving forward with it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wanting to comment on the project tonight?
I would just echo Commissioner Hernandez's comments, well said and agree wholeheartedly.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was, I was going to say that exact same thing, that the process with the AAC and the, and the applicant's good faith is, is, is great to see. And this is, this is so much the kind of project that is going to help us make Main Street more vibrant. So thanks to everybody who's, you know, contributed to this coming out so well.
Thank you. I also wanted to add my voice to the project. I, the one, the one topic that caught my eye was the landscaping. I appreciate the applicant's openness to an irrigation system, not because I don't expect the hand watering to be brilliant, but because I, I like to think that these trees will survive us all. And, you know, trying to, trying to think about the long game here. I believe that Commissioner, or sorry, Director Doughty had some comments earlier about the assessment. Is there a follow-up on that? I want to just check in and see if there's that or anything else that we ought to cover before we move on to the matter of a motion.
There, if I could, through the, through the chair.
Who is it? I'm sorry. You have the floor, John. Thank you.
There were, there were a couple of things I just wanted to, to maybe recommend correction on. And I apologize, this is coming out of my department and, and, but I'd rather catch it now and kind of deal with it for the long haul. One is, is that I'd like to strike condition 11. There is no evidence of sewer connection capacity. Sam is not responsible for doing that. And that is not something that, that we should have as a condition of approval in these. There's a different issue altogether with that. But Sam has, that's not something that Sam normally typically does. With that, we own and operate basically through the JPA. So we can work on what that looks like, but, but it's, it really isn't quite correct. And I just recommend striking it because it's not an issue at this moment in time at all. In response to the questions about the street grates, we have standard engineering standards that we require for the size and, and the type of grades themselves. We also have a tree planting requirements. And if you, you know, if you look at downtown, pretty much the only street, street trees that were planted with the new planting requirements, which require and basically are designed for deep rooting, is the Macdutra Plaza. And you can see that those trees are actually doing really, really well. They were planted correctly and they were actually, they were actually booked out originally at 36 inch box trees. We had to downsize them to 24 because they wouldn't fit in those areas. But they are doing really, really well. They are also irrigated. So the irrigation is drawing the roots deeper. The structured soil in there that we require are drawing them and allowing the roots to go. So it's not all about the size. The other challenge we have with going to a larger grate size is that we have ADA issues. And we have very minimal width between sidewalk to the, to the buildings themselves. And so we have to be very careful about not having too wide of grates that interfere with ADA clearances, folks in walkers, folks in wheelchairs. And this is an area in which the seniors are coming from the senior coast sider and the other communities there. Yeah, so this is not an area we would want to, I think, constrict that any more than we, we can and would want to do that. So we'll take care of that. Trust me, we're, we'll, we'll, we'll be fine with that. And I'm thrilled that the applicant is committed to irrigating those. It's the, it's, it's a big thing. And then obviously, the one that Jill already, we spoke about, 22, it says the sewer connection fee. It's actually, we've changed the name of that to sewer capacity fee. And all I would just recommend is that the language be that the proposed development is subject to sewer capacity fee pursuant to the Hapton Bay Municipal Code, period. The fee shall be paid to the city prior to issuance of building permits. So that's, that's the simple answer to that one. And, and it is referencing the old ordinance. So again, my apologies for that. I don't, we haven't, we haven't codified the new ordinance into the Muni code online. So it's, it's a, no, it's not, it's not a wonder that we have that issue happening with this, but we'll make sure that, that we're all aware of it and kind of moving forward with it. So those are very small issues and minor in nature and all, all the result of my departments. Just, just a little attention to detail that we need to deal with. So I apologize for that.
Thank you, John. And just to follow up on the irrigation matter, is the irrigation in Macdutra Park consistent with our efficient landscaping watering ordinance? In other words, is it?
Absolutely, absolutely. Those are bubbler, they're all bubbler, they're all, they were compliant at the time. Now we've changed and adopted new ordinance. I'm not gonna, I can't speak to whether retroactively those have been, but they're basically, they were compliant at the time and I believe they're still compliant at this point. They're all bubbler and, and they're, and the planting that we set for those street trees with Kakucho's design and Tom Conroy being very involved are what we basically brought over into the engineering standards. So, so we pretty much stole their design from the, from the, from that. Don't tell them that, but that's what we did.
The sincerest form of flattery.
Absolutely. We haven't had, we haven't had, you know, an original thought in 20 years, I don't think.
You heard it here first. All right, thank you. Colleagues, further discussion?
I just, this is Commissioner Polgar. I just wanted to echo my fellow commissioners' appreciation for how much the applicant has worked on through the process. And I'm really excited about this project. And I did want to say that based on hearing the size of the trees, like that they, you know, could reach, I actually think that they're pretty sufficient. I'd be a little bit worried about making it too, putting in more trees. I think at this point, that might be a bit much. But I think it'll accomplish what Commissioner Reddick is, is looking for. So I'm really pleased about that. So I just wanted to echo others' comments.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
I echo Commissioner Polgar's comments on the landscaping. I think the, the trees as designated in the plan are sufficient and appropriate. I'd, I would, given the applicant's green thumb, I would leave it to the applicant to make improvements down the road. But I think this will be a very good plan while executed.
Thank you. Were you concerned about the irrigation, the drip irrigation? Are you okay with including that in the plan?
I, I think, I mean, they don't want the trees to die. And I think they're going to put the irrigation in at their own pace. So I, I don't think we need to amend the plan, let them do it on their own terms. I don't think we need to amend the, the plan.
Any other colleagues? All right, I will just review what I think I heard, which was to replace condition 11. And I heard that a modified version of the grates that were in Macdutra Park have worked really well for avoiding, cutting down the, you know, for limiting the size of the trees, although it seemed to require irrigation to pull the roots down. And with respect to condition, wider grates would be limited by the ADA, which we don't want to do. And then condition 22 would have the modification that, that Director Doughty read into the record. So I guess I'm leaning a little bit more towards the irrigation, just because it sounds like that's getting us a better result for the limited size of the box. But, you know, I'm going to accept the judgment of the commission if you, if you disagree. Could I have a motion?
Well, I can, I'll move that we approve with the changes that Chair Benjamin noted. I think it was removing 11, changing the language in 22 to reflect what Director Doughty had said. And I, I think those are the two changes to the actual resolution. Is that correct? Or is there more that I missed?
Just whether to include irrigation or not.
I had understood that, I, I wasn't going to propose that because I understood that was something that could go forward with the, at the building, at the plan review stage.
It would go forward at the plan review stage?
Yeah, that's, that, I had understood that that was how, that, that could be done at that stage. Am I incorrect? Did I misunderstand that earlier?
I don't know, staff, is that the way it goes?
Yes, we could require that during building permit plan check. And there is going to be an encroachment permit with this project also. And it can be required through the encroachment permit.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second to Commissioner Polgar's motion?
I second them.
Commissioner Holt beat him to the punch.
Bridgette, I'm the one commissioner who did it.
I apologized. My hearing, I, I wasn't telling where it was coming from. And then I realized it's the speakers, not the video. So that would have been Commissioner Reddick.
Correct.
Thank you. Sigrid, Bridgette, you are also.
It's all right. Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I.
Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Moody. Thank you uh all for bringing the project through. We're very happy with the way it goes and look forward to. Seeing it as it evolves. Uh that concludes the items on our public hearing agenda, and the next item on our list is our director's report. Take it away.
Thank you. Uh very efficient meeting tonight. Uh we appreciate that very much and all the feedback you gave to staff. Just updating and refreshing from the directory report two weeks ago, we are on track with your agenda forecast. November twenty fourth, you will see the five 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 Seymour. Initial study mitigated negative declaration involving a parcel map. The um environmental review document was already um sent to you uh via. Email with a link. It's that documents on the city website. We encourage you to um. Get into that a bit if you can this week because that's really the bulk of your packet materials. Uh the staff report um will follow, but uh you have you have plenty to chew on with that. Uh we're also um planning to bring three forty one Myrtle, a new single family home. Uh Carter Park is noticed for. Your last meeting of the year on December eighth, and that also has an initial study and a negative declaration. It's a coastal development permit. You had a study session on this about um, I think, a year and a half ago. I'm working through when that was. So uh this is coming back through and uh we'll get that. Environmental review document to you soon. It is posted on the website. It's already been circulated, but we were holding it back because you had. Seymour and you had this packet with um the the Boring's project, which had quite a few attachments. So we'll. We'll get um something to you uh this before the end of the week, so you can get your hands on that one as well. Don't have any new updates for city council for director hearings. We are currently working through a number of accessory dwelling units, and we'll have. A December meeting on either the first or second Wednesday of December, we will. Hold an open forum for those. They do not need hearings. They are administrative reviews, but we continue to have. A virtual Zoom room for neighbors who who would have maybe otherwise come to City Hall to talk to the planner about those projects. The architectural advisory committee's next meeting is on November nineteenth, next week. They will see a uh landscape and facade improvements for a portion of the Strawflower Shopping Center. And also uh a new uh primary building signage for uh restaurant. At three, in three hundred block of Main Street, uh Fattoria in Mare. On December seventeenth, that will be the last architectural advisory committee meeting for the year. Um the applicant is on. Aiming to have an application to us in time for Maine and Kelly, but that's the. A corner that we've talked about a few times um across the street from City Hall. A couple other interesting matters. Uh they all happen to be on the same day. Uh November twelfth, so in a couple days. Um A-Bag, the Association of Bay Area Governments, is having a methodology um. Meeting about the regional housing needs allocation. That's Rena. And uh there is a meeting that you could tap into if you're interested. It's at one o'clock PM. However, at six thirty PM uh the same day. Uh they will be making a presentation to C-KAG, the City County Association of Governments for San Mateo County. And that presentation will focus on county jurisdictions. And I will be uh sitting in and listening to that. I have been uh along with staff tracking it. And we're uh preparing whether or not we're going to submit a letter. Um other cities in our county are submitting letters, and uh we've seen our draft numbers. On specifically San Mateo County for the unincorporated midcoast is going to um, they're planning to submit something along the lines of what. Um I would suggest, which is just acknowledge that we are wholly within the coastal zone and. Our regional housing needs allocation needs to be um compatible with all those requirements, as well as in the case of uh Happening Bay with. With measure D. That said, it appears um at least with the draft numbers that we've seen that they have done that. So there's there's some um. Perhaps some validation of of what we're seeing coming through with with that process. Now, um that C-KAG presentation is at exactly the same time. As uh the State of the City address from our mayor, Adam Eisen. It will be also Thursday, November twelfth at six thirty PM. And so you can have one or two Zoom meetings going and. See if you can listen with two ears. Um the State of the City, I think, will be um available to you though afterwards, and maybe the C-KAG meeting will as well, so you could watch them. As recorded later. And that is it for the directory report. If you have questions, let me know. I know John Doughty's available to. Um address some things that came up at your last meeting um during uh commission. Items, so we just want to give him a chance to do that, if that's okay.
Take it away, John.
Well, I guess I left too early last meeting. Because Commissioner Hernandez, I think, raised some questions about the garbage cans at Poplar, and I don't know what else. So I I I wanted to give him a, give him another shot at me um with that. Um what I um, what I gathered was. I think a a some comments about the fact that we had removed the smaller. Um receptacles at Poplar um beach and particularly at the at the parking lot area. We have removed those. Bottom line was that they were just being abused and and um and every time when they're full. The folks just pile the garbage there instead of going to the next available dumpster, and that's kind of the the problem we're having. What I've also, though, um what I commit to you is that um we're not. Saying that we will never come back to the smaller uh receptacles. Um in fact, we're gonna s- uh take a real. Serious look at what we're going to do for next spring at Poplar, and um I cannot envision. Not having some of the smaller receptacles uh in and around um some of the areas. Because we know not everything wants to meet at the large dumpsters, but. Um if we have any kind of um activity like this year, I don't see us going away from the larger dumpsters, but. You know, I just wanted to speak to that, and if if Commissioner Hernandez or anybody else wanted to ask me anything, I'm here. Uh at this point. So again, I apologize. I left too early.
Thank you. Hernandez, great kick.
Yeah, no, I um. First of all, I I I think that the, to put everything in context, the state of Poplar Beach over the last four years. Has gone from night and day. It's significantly better than what it was before. The efforts the city's taken to have trash collection. By people actually working on the weekends and certain weekdays. Is a dramatic improvement over what things were before, and we all appreciate that. That said, if you have some trash cans in key locations where people are walking. Would probably reduce some of the trash. Uh I I don't really care about the trash compactors that you had by the edge of the bluffs. I'm more thinking about the the concrete containers uh with the receptacles inside. Bring those back. They get used. They reduce waste. Uh it reduces the amount of human effort necessary to clean things up after the fact. Uh but the the compressors, yeah, I I agree. I think it's a good move to make, take them out of there, but. A number of people have commented and reached out to me and made comments about the fact that there are no trash cans. And it's for people who park. On Poplar Beach, the dumpsters are fine. But ninety percent of the people who are there day in and day out. Don't go by the dumpsters. So just, it would be nice to get some some trash cans back.
The I, the irony in all of this is that um one of the reasons these were taken out was because we were getting feedback from community members. Um to remove them and just focus on that. So um. This is, this is my life in a nutshell when it comes to Poplar Beach. I, you know. It it just, it is what it is. I I, what I believe is this. There's a middle ground somewhere in there. We're going to look for solutions that provide more more capacity than those concrete. Do dual um source or dual uh flow um that we're providing because we're struggling just to get in there and on weekends, you know, just trying to keep. Those things from overfilling. But we do recognize the staff that we think we need some smaller cans down the way, that it's not just the 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 dumpster. So I think we're saying the same thing. Um as a lot of the community members, but I but I will share the irony of all that is that. Is that we we ended up taking them out in response to a a number of people complaining that they're just making a mess out there. So I mean, we, you know, it's.
I I I get it. I I I get it. You got a lot of uh, you you get it either way, but um. It's a dramatic improvement. It would be nice to, and and again, I'm happy to volunteer my time. It would be nice to just take a look at the whole Poplar area and figure out what we can do to make it look a little less trashy. The beach access points have improved dramatically, but the parking area and the signage and the. The whatnots with the parking lot and the way they are, it does look tacky, and it'd be great to take some action to just. In parallel with all the other efforts that are going on in the Poplar Beach Street improvements. To just take some minor actions to just make it look less tacky, and I think placement of the dumpsters, placement of the porta potties, you know, all those kinds of things. We could just clean that up and and.
They do. It doesn't matter. I'm with you, and um I hope I hope uh folks have noticed the new parking signs out there. Bilingual, I think they um, I think they look a lot better than what we've had out there in the past. Um they're not overwhelming, but they're, I think. Adequate, and I think the, you know, for some, we've had bilingual Spanish signs out there, so that's kind of a a focal point that we're we're working on per your. For your CDP and directions on that. And then um we are also have um, we got a grant uh for Keep America Beautiful. Um and there uh, we have uh cigarette butt um containers, and they're going up, hopefully. Should be up this week, um by the end of this week, uh around at uh, one of them will be at Poplar. I'm sh- I I'm positive. One I know is going to be at Mac Dutra and and uh and um I can't recall the third location. But that's kind of exciting, so we'll have those. Those look really cool. And so, you know, we're, it's a constant evolution. One of the things I will say this is that I'm 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 absolutely perplexed and and um. And apoplectic at sometimes. People I find are here are still going, trying to go down the stairs with their horses. Not not Sea Horse Ranch, not Sea Horse Ranch, folks, but but private equestrian uh folks with that. So one of the things that my staff and I are looking at is trying to figure out. How do we basically allow people to go through with their coolers and all the things down there while making a statement that says, don't take your horse down here, you idiot. Because you're going to fall down the stairs and kill your horse. You know, and you're breaking the steps and chipping them and dealing with it all at the same time. Signage is clearly there that you go down the other way, so we're gonna have to create some kind of pathway through there to deal with it. So yes, I'm.
Guys, we're kind of getting, we're getting out in the weeds here. Let's wrap it up if we can.
But I hope, but I hope we can, we can start to look at that. I, you know, those are the things we're, those are things that we're looking at and working on.
Thank you for your efforts on Poplar Beach. I'm the the four of us who live within uh three quarters of a mile of Poplar Beach greatly appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
All of us do, to be fair.
And and they're not my, they're they're very little my efforts. There are a lot of hardworking people are out there every day, including the abundant grace. And the maintenance staff, and that's who, that's who the credit. And your counsel for putting the money out there for doing that and hire, allowing me to hire the staff to to maintain those. So I'm I'm just a small cog in the process.
Commissioner Polgar, you looked like you were about to say something a while back. Was there something on your mind? Nope. Okay, very good. Uh Commissioner Ruddock, Vice Chair.
John, a word to the wise, a cattle guard on the Poplar stairs.
Hmm.
No, no, more more seriously. That is one of them. But, oh, my lord, okay.
No, I'm I'm kidding around, but. But uh I wanted to spend one minute on the bigger question of the landfill out there south of Poplar Beach. And two weeks ago, as you all know, when we saw the the maps from the county and heard about, apparently their intent to. Uh finally get serious about uh the concept of cleaning that up and and capping it. It was, it was, it wasn't news to most of us, but. I think it's hopeful sign, and and there was a lot of energy in the, in our commission's discussion of it. But I've thought about that in the ensuing two weeks, and I, uh what I would love to see is the city to. Also get serious about holding the county's feet to the fire on this, on this need. And uh do what we can to encourage and insist that that cleanup takes place. And not let the county wiggle out of it or try to stick us with the bill for it or tell us we have to find a grant to make it happen. So I. I guess, I I guess the appropriate thing is, I would respectfully suggest to to Jill and John. That it'd be great if you guys could take that to the city manager and agendize it for city council and get the. Council to put a policy in place about about the proper way to work with the county to maximize the chance of that coming to pass.
I'm I'm waiting for winter to jump in on uh on whether we're we're past the Brown Act point. But um I do have a little bit of response, but I'll let her tell me whether I can respond or not.
I I think it's been a good discussion, and we should wrap up this uh good discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other uh uh putting uh any other questions for the director's report? As long as we've got uh John here. Uh I have one quick one, John. I know that you're not in charge of Venice, but it's been a few months since we talked about Venice. And I understood that the uh city was going to have a conversation with the state beach. I wonder if there's any fruition. All I've noticed, there are some big tape marks and some cones that I've seen laid on the ground in Venice Beach, but otherwise it's a mystery. If there's no update, that's great. Just, you know, no agenda here. Just want to understand what the latest is.
It is pretty much sitting where it sits um due to a lot of changes in state park staff uh COVID nineteen. I I I really don't, I don't see, I don't see productive conversations occurring till after the first of the year.
I see. Okay, thank you. Um any other director's report items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to Commissioner Communications. Vice Chair Ruddock mentioned that he and I were uh attended the uh presentation by the county concerning uh. The plans for reacting to heat. It had some ramifications that were useful for. Uh maybe the safety element. There'll probably be some follow-on conversations. Anything to add to that, Vice Chair?
No, not at this point. I I think, I think it would be good for you and I to maybe the the brief discussion we had this afternoon to amplify that for the. Commission at some point, but. I'm I'm not really organized to do that right now.
Yeah, agreed. Um are there any other putting Commissioner Communications? All right, uh seeing that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move re-adjourn.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Hernandez has the second. Roll call vote, please. Bridget.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Hi.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Ruddock?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yo ho ho. We are adjourned. Good night.
Bye.
Take care.